All right, we are live.
That leaves Jamil.
Amy, you're on mute.
It's probably for the better.
Okay, so you know, all that string of expletives that I just let loose with, none of you heard them? No, I really can't do it. I'm at Lake Tahoe right now. I don't know if I can stay on for the whole meeting, so.
Sure.
Somebody else has got to do it today. Maybe, maybe when I'm in Rollingwood, I will do it, okay?
I think we're just going to ask somebody to commit to two meetings. So, and then move on. Jamil, would you be willing to? Start the meeting?
I'm sorry, what are you asking me to do?
Can you, can you start and run the meeting until we see who else jumps on and get to that, that meeting item? We're gonna just chair, chairing the meeting.
Wow.
Put me on.
I'll give it a shot. So, is Jordan, is Jordan resigned from the chair? Is he no longer the chair?
Correct. That's right. I think you were out for that meeting. I have taken on a scout master of troop thirty-one, which is going to take up a ton more of my time than I initially thought. So I am officially out as chair.
Well, I knew you were, I knew you were contemplating it. I didn't know that that was, it was done, done.
Done, done. I am, I am scout master as of two weeks ago, and I made it forty-five minutes before the first crisis hit. So it's just going to be one of those jobs that is going to take the majority of my attention.
So Ashley or Jordan, you guys are going to have to sort of walk me through sequence here.
If we just start with opening the meeting, stating the time, and then calling roll?
Okay, it is six oh nine PM on June second. This is City of Rollingwood Planning and Zoning. And roll call, please.
Jordan Scott here.
Michael Hall here.
Amy Rodnick here.
Jamil Alum.
And that's all we have with us.
That all we have?
From the commission.
Okay. Discussion and possible action for the minutes for the April seventh, twenty twenty-one P and Z Commission Meeting.
Jamil, I think we might have skipped over public comments, and I think we have someone's hand already up. Alec Robinson, would you like?
Oh, hey, Alec.
Public comments?
Hey, Jamil. Yes, I would. Thank you, guys. I mean, I'm sure.
Sorry, Alec, I didn't see your hand. Apologize.
No worries. I bet you'll probably know what I'm going to talk about, but I'll just say, my name's Alec Robinson. I live at four eight one eight Rollingwood Drive, and I want to thank the commission for giving me a couple of minutes here to speak about something that I find very concerning. There's some discussion happening in our city around the idea of carving out a portion of our park for a commercial purpose. I'm talking about the proposal to bring Tiny Milk and Cookies to Rollingwood Park. I'm strongly against this idea, and here's why. Firstly, I don't believe that this proposal is compatible with the express intent for this park to be used to support youth sports opportunities for children in the West Bank area. Rollingwood purchased this park, promising to keep it safe and secure for future generations of kids to play sports. I don't believe entering into a commercial lease of parkland to a company that operates a modern take on a coffee shop operating seven days a week, fourteen hours a day, is in keeping with that promise. Secondly, it's not like this location is the only place where this business can be successful in Rollingwood. We have a commercial corridor that would be perfect. A business like this could also help grow awareness and bring high-end branding to our commercial district. Moreover, perhaps other upscale businesses would follow their lead and choose to locate on B Cave Road, and that would be amazing for the city. Thirdly, do not let the owners tell of Tiny Milk and Cookies suggests that this business won't work on B Cave Road. They're currently building a new location in Memorial that has an address on the Katy Freeway. That's I-ten. Clearly, they don't have a distaste for high-traffic thoroughfares. The owners can locate this and do well with it on B Cave Road. All Tiny Milk and Cookies are located in commercial districts. Not one is located in a community park, and why do you think that is? Finally, we should never carve out a portion of our parkland for commercial businesses that are clearly not in keeping with the intended use of this park. We should fight to preserve the park as we promised we would in nineteen ninety-three when we purchased it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alec. Just so I don't mess up any further, does anybody else have their hand up? Carrie, Ashley, you guys see anybody?
At this time, there are no other hands up.
Okay, so that concludes public comments. Discussion and possible action on the minutes from the April seventh, twenty twenty-one P and Z Commission Meeting.
Has everybody had a chance to read the meeting minutes? Do we have any corrections? If not, does somebody want to make a motion?
I could take five minutes. I just realized that was the one part I didn't click. So I did not read the minutes, if y'all don't mind.
Oh, I see Brian Nash is on here. Let the record show that Brian Nash has joined us. Hey, Brian.
I just told Tony, I just told Tony we're going to TP his house because he's out of town. He said, good luck finding any tree branches.
If y'all would like to table these minutes or just take no action on the minutes, we can bring them back next month or the next time P and Z meets, if you haven't had a chance to review them.
Yeah, they're pretty long.
Does someone want to make a motion to table the minutes?
I'll make a motion to table the minutes.
Yeah, I'll second.
Roll call?
I'm an, I'm an I.
Jamil?
I.
Michael?
I.
Amy?
I.
Brian, are you with us?
It looks like he's trying to get on the audio now.
Yeah, okay. Motion passes. Let's discuss electing a chair. Whoever wants to be chair, Ashley and I will train you up. If we've got somebody who wants to serve regularly, but we could also just have somebody commit to the next two meetings and then go from there. That might, that, everybody's busy. That might be the easiest. Is anybody? Is anybody available to chair? Like July and August meeting dates? Assuming we have July and August meetings?
I vote for Tony.
I second the nomination of Tony Stein as chair for the next two meetings.
Brian, I was, I was going to volunteer you since you weren't chiming in.
I believe, I believe Tony Stein was nominated and seconded. I think that's the, that's what's now on the table for vote, Carrie. So I'm sorry, but we can't, willing to entertain that as a secondary consideration later. But let's just move this to a vote. I vote in favor of Tony Stein as chair for the next two meetings.
Okay, roll call.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
While we're at it, should we vote Mike Rhodes for the next two after that?
I will, I will, I will, I'll make that motion. Sure, I still move.
Second.
That'll teach him to miss. Okay, Jamil, you're in charge. Call, call for a vote.
All right. So, all of those in favor of Mike Rhodes chairing meetings three and four? I don't remember, Carrie, what the months are.
That'd be September and October.
September and October. Say, please indicate your vote. Aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it.
Great.
Congratulations, Mike. Let's keep going.
Really, you're doing great. It's going to be a short meeting.
I think you know. Most we've accomplished in a while. I like it.
I think by November and December, Michael Hall will be ready to chair for a couple of meetings. So maybe we, we just vote him in. He could say nay, that's fine.
Certainly, certainly incentivizes one to attend the meeting.
Yeah. I think maybe the next person to miss a meeting, we just vote him in for November and December.
Love it.
There you go.
I think that sounds fair.
Oh, Mike, Mike just says he's trying to get on. I should just text him. It's too late.
Too late, man. Damage is done. This meeting has been recorded. Their record is official.
Okay, we done with, we done with chair for the next four months?
I think we got it.
All right. Item number five, discussable, discussion, possible action on amendments to the city's Code of Ordinances, section twenty-eight dash seventy, driveways with more than one curb cut to limit the number of curb cuts, and section one oh seven dash three six, driveways to expand the types of materials permitted for driveways.
Sure, I'll kick this off. So currently, there's two issues that City Council has come up in the past, and City Council asked the commission to consider. One is that there, the code states that you're required to have a permanently hard-topped and durable surface for your driveway. There's no definition for that. So if the commission wants to consider, does that mean concrete? Does that mean concrete and asphalt? Could that mean pervious pavers? Can that mean crushed granite? Obviously, there's, there's separate restrictions for a driveway apron, and that has to be, that's very specific dimensions, masonry materials and that. But for the driveway itself and the materials related to that. And then the other item for consideration is that we've got regulations for circular driveways. We've got regulations for single driveways. Does the commission care or feel it is in the best interest of the community to limit that or leave it the way it is? As it is now, if, if you meet your, the drainage criteria manual, you could have as many driveways as you want. You could have one, or you could have ten. So.
So I'll just, I'll comment on the second part of the, the item. And I may be, I may be the only one that, that feels this way. I recall we had a discussion about it a few months ago, and, and I think I was pretty severely outvoted. I, I think curb cuts, particularly on streets like Rollingwood Drive, where there is both a decent amount of pedestrian activity, but also bike activity. I, I think, I think curb cuts create a a pretty undesirable condition, and I don't, I don't love the idea of seeing Rollingwood Drive with circle drives and two curb cuts up and down the street, and then on corners, in some cases, with, with three curb cuts. It just makes me, it, it worries me that we're going to look up in a few years and, and we're just going to have curb cuts everywhere on, on Rollingwood in particular. Does anybody else have any feelings about those topics?
I'll say, I think the current code is probably a little too relaxed with the number of curb cuts, if it, if it truly is as many as you want. I think generally speaking, I'm I'm sort of in a line of two curb cuts. I could see arguments on Rollingwood Drive for, hey, I want, I don't want to be backing out onto Rollingwood Drive. If I could have a circle drive, it'd be safer for me to pull out forward. And whether we agree with that or not, I just see that as a, as a logical argument. I think also, Jamil, I agree with the potential for a lot. I, I guess it strikes me that we should just come up with something that fits for all residential as opposed to carving out certain parts versus other parts. And so I would be up for like two curb cut limit. I don't really have a problem if they cross corners. I do have a problem when those two corners are both very busy streets, like particularly busy corners. That sort of is the only bit that, much like Jamil, I'm like, yeah, if we say that for all of them, then what about the really busy corners where that's kind of a mess? So I'm fine to keep the current situation where those looking for a curb cut that would cross a corner, meaning from one street to another, would have to come to P and Z. I've been saying, let's get this over to Board of Adjustment, but I realize that Board of Adjustment has a much higher hurdle. So we may want to keep that hurdle at the P and Z level, which is not restricted to that height, that, that level of hurdle. And then there are some lots that front two different parallel streets. Not many of them, but they're out there, and I would think we could probably draw in some means to get a, an additional curb cut in the rear. If somebody really wanted to have a circle driveway in front and a curb cut in the rear or something like that, that we would have that ability for P and Z to potentially authorize a third curb cut on a different street, if that makes sense. So it's, I don't know how to word that from a code perspective, and again, that's, that's not necessarily our job. I would, if I was going to make a recommendation to council, I'd say two curb cuts, planning and zoning can allow those two curb cuts to either be on two perpendicular streets. Is that right? Perpendicular streets? Or can allow for an additional curb cut on a parallel street? That'd be my recommendation. I know three sounds like a lot, but I can think of a couple of different existing properties that have that situation of a two curb cuts on one facing street and then have a rear driveway that doesn't cause any traffic problems. It's on a parallel street. That's my two cents on it. As for the, what the driveway is made out of, I, I'd love to tackle them separately and say, let's tackle the curb cut thing first and then figure out what's the problem with driveway material. I mean, I, I don't care if it's brick or, or, or some sort of, you know, semi-pervious. I mean, there's all sorts of driveway materials, and I'd love to understand what the issue is there. But I think maybe we divide and conquer and talk curb cuts first and then talk driveway material second. That's my two cents.
Hey, so one more thing I meant to mention in my soliloquy. I, I'm just, I'm a little bit worried that, that we're going to create a construct that results in everybody's, everybody's a big word, many people's front yards turning into parking lots. And I've already seen it in, in one house recently built, and, and if we, if we allow circle drives with two curb cuts, I, I think we ought to be prepared for that.
Yeah, when we did the parking of trailers, we looked at Highland Park up in Dallas, and they had pretty restrictive code of one curb cut. I think it even limited it to like one car in the driveway. Maybe two, and then it went really deep into what cars are allowed in the driveway, if at all. But I feel like it allowed like one car in Highland Park temporarily, and every other car had to be in a garage. Like you got one, and it couldn't be a van or a pickup truck type thing.
I'm curious, Carrie or Ashley, how did this item make its way to our agenda? Is this something that came forward from staff and is a concern? Or was this from a P and Z member, or how did we get here?
It, it came, it was the confluence of a couple of things. We had those driveway variances. There were a couple driveway variances that came to you all, and there were a couple driveway variances that went to City Council. And when I initially took over from PDG, I was reading kind of the spirit of the code to be one, a single curb cut or circular drive. That, you know, we have these specific regulations for two curb cuts, and we have specific regulations for one. I have gone back on my opinion on that, that it really is, is open to interpretation. So I, I mean, reading the code liberally, I think you could have as many as you want. And so I'm in a little bit of a gray area there, and so I feel like it's a community decision. You know, as it is right now, when we're doing these zoning reviews, we're just, if you meet your DCM, then you can do it. If it's a circular driveway that meets the regulations and it's not cutting across streets, then it doesn't need a variance. And if, if you meet drainage, then you can have as many as, as you want. But I think the question did come up at a council meeting of, well, do, do we, do we care? Do we, do we know how people feel about this? Is this something we should limit or, or not? So I don't have an opinion one way or another, but I think it, it is something worth discussing because it's, it's going to keep coming up. So if it is something, I mean, you certainly have more potential conflict points with pedestrians, the more curb cuts you have. But a lot of people, you know, there, there's certainly a benefit to having circular drives and, and, you know, when you have a corner lot, you might want a driveway in the front or a circular driveway in the front and one on the side or in the rear. So. Maybe this isn't something, if y'all don't want to take action on it, then we can move on. Jamil, you're muted.
Sorry, my wife was talking to me.
Oh. It looks like Alec Robinson has his hand up.
Yeah, just quickly, because I live on Rollingwood Drive, and I have some friends that have circular drives, and this is just my perspective and talking with them. The reason is, the reason that people have done it is to improve safety so that they're pulling out and they see. Because I back out on Rollingwood Drive every day, and it's more dangerous to back out that way than it is to pull out forward where you can see. So that's, that's the logic of why you might want them.
Yeah, and I, I hear that, but there, there's a different way to solve that problem, which is to create, and then, and then front out. I, I just, I find, I find Rollingwood's code as it relates to circle drives or driveways to be just really, really liberal relative to, relative to other cities. And again, I, you know, I just, I just, I hate the idea that we're just going to turn into a neighborhood full of, you know, cars parked in front of houses everywhere.
I did reach out to Westlake and City of Austin to see how they regulate it, and no one's gotten back to me yet. So if, if y'all want to table this and, and revisit it when we know what some of our surrounding is, is doing, or we, we can.
Well, do we want to make a recommendation? I mean, I guess the first step is, do we want to limit it to less than infinity, if that's what the current code has? While we explore it, do we want to give Carrie the guidance that she's asking for through the City Council? And, and I'm in favor of some sort of limit. I, I don't care if that number's three or two or, or, or one, but it would be like, well, let's limit it out, and we can always look deeper into what we want to do. The infinity part sort of bothers me in that there are architects who are, there's a lot of building going on. A lot of architects who are like, oh, sweet, we can really push some of this thirty-year-old code to its, to, to max it out. And, and as Carrie mentioned, perhaps not living up to the spirit and, and trying to stress, stretch the letter of the law. So I mean, I'd love to hear from Michael and, and Brian and Amy as to their appetite for any recommendation on a limit.
I mean, I'm, I'm happy to provide my sort of high-level thinking on this. I don't know how much. Like, I guess I, my, my thinking on this is, I don't know how much this is really a problem. Because I, I don't, I haven't noticed anything, and I guess there's always going to be. So if, if you limit the number of curb cuts, then what stops somebody from making it an exceptionally large curb cut? You know, like, there's driveways that are at least, you know, three lanes wide, right? There could be driveways that are like, you know, five cars wide, and then you've got the same issue that you're talking about, but it's only the one curb cut. So does that? I mean, I, I hear what Jamil's saying about like, you know, do we want to be one where we've got a bunch of cars parked in front of houses on driveways? But, but I don't know that the curb cut necessarily is like, okay, you do that, and then there's other ways around that, right? I mean, I don't know that this is, I don't know that this is necessarily a problem. I also don't know that this necessarily solves the, the problem that people are fearing will take place. Does that make sense, what I'm talking about? When I, I'm thinking of one that's actually like Ridgewood and Hatley. It's not in Austin, it's not in Rollingwood. It's either in Westlake or City of Austin. Lovely home, lovely people. They have like a bunch of Jeeps there, but it's, you know, it's like at least three cars wide, and it's usually two cars deep. So Jamil, if you were like concerned about it, I think it's technically probably just one curb cut, but it's got like six cars parked there, usually in their driveway.
I know, I know which house you're talking about, and I think the difference is that house is on a corner, and those cars are parked on the side.
Yeah, but it wouldn't have to be that way, I guess, is what I'm saying, and, and no, no curb cut limitation is going to preclude that, right?
I don't, I don't know.
Because it's just one curb cut, so it's like.
And I guess what you're, what you're really getting to is, is a slightly different issue, which is, you know, irrespective of, of how many curb cuts we allow, you know, do we want to limit the width of the curb cut?
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm not even saying that we need to do that. I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud that like, well, if you said, I'm going to limit you on the number of curb cuts, then I could see somebody saying, okay, then I'll just do one really big curb cut. I'm going to start at this end of my property and cut it the other end, all the way at that end of my property, and it's one curb cut, but it's, it's really long or something.
Well, no, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying is that, is that another flaw is if we, wherever we land on this, you know, we might think about what the, what the maximum width would be of a curb cut.
Right.
I mean, you know, taking it, taking it to an extreme, it could just not even be, there could not be a curb. It could just be kind of lay down the whole way across the lot, right? And just be. And just be one, one contiguous driveway.
Yeah. I mean, how often does this come up? I mean, what was the sort of directive from city council on this issue? I mean, it's not something I've ever heard from a resident saying like, grr, so many curb cuts, angry. Um, but, but maybe I'm not as in tune with the people. Is this something that comes up quite a bit?
It's something that's come out a few times in the last year. What the, the initial impetus was, was 4830 Rollingwood Drive, which you all saw for a, a variance on a circular drive where they wanted to cut through from Rollingwood to Edge Grove. Then they wanted to put another curb cut on Edge Grove, but they've got an existing curb cut on Rollingwood that like you say, is, is really as wide as two kind of standard curb cuts. With parking for about six vehicles on that side of the home. And so it, it just, that discussion in that meeting, um, for their variances was kind of what, what generated this conversation. Uh, but it's come up with a, a few other properties as well. Um, I'm not.
Yeah, but in that instance, there was a limit that, that had stopped it from being more. And they had to seek a variance to get, to get that what they wanted, right?
They didn't get what they wanted. They
Right. I'm saying, I'm saying there was already a limit that works to limit what they were able to do. So
Not really. Wait, the way it ended up was that in order to have a deep enough driveway to park a car on the Edge Grove side, it, it wasn't feasible with where their planter boxes were. They would be sticking in our right of way. There, there wasn't room for a full sized vehicle to really be parked there. And they, they kind of let it go. But it wasn't specifically the number. My initial plan review limited them on the number. Um, and that's, that's what the engineer and I discussed was, well, you could read this restrictively, read the code restrictively and say, well, the spirit of the code is a single curb cut or circular driveway. Or you could read it liberally. And so we started restrictively. And then were directed by council not to read it that way. But that's why it's coming to you all.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, um, I'm less sort of focused on personally, this being an issue uh, in the past, I, I, I predict it is going to become a bigger and bigger issue in the future as we have bigger houses and more cars. Um, and you know, there, there's one or two houses in particular that to me are just, you know, they're just now turned into parking lots in front of the house. Now, I, I think it will continue to happen. So Amy? Mike, others?
I don't know that I have a whole lot to add right now without spending a lot more time really looking at the pros and cons of altering what we currently have in place. I'm, I don't feel I'm qualified to say I'm, I'm all for in favor of expanding it or not.
Mike?
Yeah, from my perspective, I, I do think that there's probably should be some limit on the number. Again, I don't, I wouldn't care either if it's two or three, but three seems excessive for a lot of lots, but it may be the right number for a different lot. Um, but I do think the width also should be addressed. I'm not sure if it is addressed at all at this point. No. So i- if maybe something that if somebody has more curb cuts, the width would have to be, you know, smaller, might be a way to address that as well.
Kerry is one option for us to come up with a maximum linear footage of curb cuts?
I, I think we could.
That's interesting.
Could be, that's a good, good way to look at that. I think we could probably come up with a metric.
Are others on the call open to that approach?
Yes.
Yes.
So perhaps instead of us just making something up on the fly, uh, Kerry, would it be fair for us to maybe ask you guys to come back and make a recommendation?
Sure.
Well, Chair Jamil, I think we found a national talent here.
And so, and so Kerry, maybe just, um, to be a little bit more, um, specific. If it's, if it's going to be a double curb cut, um, you know, tell us what that width is. If it's two single curb cuts, what is that? And then to the extent people um, are supportive of three, then at least tell us what that is and we can, we can sort of debate those.
Sure.
Those outcomes.
Sure. I'll, I'll come up with something and some drawings for, for next time.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda, update and discussion on the residential landscape ordinance. Item number six.
Jamil, do you want to hit driveway, uh, makeup?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't, uh, I, I guess I blew past that. Was there any more comment on the driveway makeup? What?
Would y'all like me to bring back some possible, like a list of possible materials?
What's the problem we're trying to solve or, or aver?
Well, uh, if, if you were using something like crushed granite, crushed granite, crushed granite or pea gravel or, um, uh, basalt, something like that, it would be less impervious cover. Um, I, I would not consider that to be a permanent hard top surface. And the concern with using something like that is that it could wash into the street. So, but it definitely is, is, could be a good option for reducing impervious cover. So if that, that, that's the trade off is that you could have a situation where somebody had a crushed granite, gravel driveway. That was messy. So I, there are a couple of them, not many. And I know we were talking last time, somebody had a, has a, we were talking about parking pads made out of, decomposed granite. So a, as it stands right now, that wouldn't be allowed. Um, if somebody were parking their car in their yard, I don't think we have any ordinances on that. Um, I think I have to go back and look.
It has to be parked on a driveway.
Does it?
Yeah.
Well, in that, in that case, then those decomposed granite, you know, pads or turnarounds or whatever it is, is not, is not something that I could permit the way the code stands right now. So really it would be expanding the types of materials used.
And if you're using a, a DCG, how does that, how does that calculate through in terms of impervious cover? Is that at 50% or what is that?
I, I'll have to check with the engineer. I think it's 75%.
Pervious or impervious?
Pervious.
Does anybody have strong feelings about this topic? Or any feelings?
I'm, I'm open to a list of suggested driveway materials, but, um, I think a broader definition might be more powerful. And, and then sort of would love to get Brian's thoughts once we have it of like, you know, once we start labeling materials, materials change all the time. You know, I know on a project I'm working on, we're looking at some greater levels of pervious coverage through, uh, part planter, part cement, uh, driveways to allow for greater, you know, less pressure on tree roots and that sort of thing. Um, I just think it gets real difficult. Once you start picking it. I guess the goal here is to not have people parking their cars on their yard and their front yard. Is that the deal?
I would see the goal as expanding it into greater materials that would be more pervious.
Okay.
So, so just to make sure I'm clear, Kerry, what you're saying right now is, uh, you, you believe code does not allow someone to park their car in the yard. And, oh, you're shaking your head no.
Uh, the way the code is written now, it doesn't allow for anything other than a, uh, concrete or asphalt driveway.
Yeah. And, and is your impression that most people, um, the, to the extent people would use this, would they use it for, um, you know, sort of a guest parking space? Or do you think that some people would want to use this for, uh, their driveway and/or all their parking?
I think some, there are individuals who'd want to use it for their driveway and all their parking or their, and basically their entrance to their garage up to that, to their foundation entrance of their garage. From basically the apron on the street to the structure.
Why? Cause I'm with you. That kind of starts to put this material out into the street if it's not permanent and hard topped, hard surfaced. So I, I'm struggling with that a little bit. I mean, we could probably put, if we want to get into that, you can say, all right, the first 15 feet, mu- much like this, uh, visibility landscaping ordinance we're about to talk about, you know, it talks about the first 15 feet from back of curb is gotta be one type of material. And, and that leaves you at least some sort of buffer zone, but I'm kind of like, are we creating a problem that doesn't exist right now? And I would argue that if someone wants to put a big sort of granite, decomposed granite parking spot in their front yard instead of grass, like, I, I guess I don't see what the issue is. It's, it's, uh, may, may, I guess, yeah, I'm trying to figure out what the problem is. I mean, much like our retaining walls that don't actually retain anything, isn't that just a pathway? Isn't that just landscaping? I mean, it's just hard for a, a community of our size to start getting into those, that level of detail uh, within our code. So I don't, I'm, I'm struggling to see if we're fixing a problem that doesn't necessarily, uh, a big one. I, I, I will say from a public safety standpoint, uh, having non-hard surface driveway material out in the right of way, out in the street creates to me kids slipping on bikes, broken arms, that sort of stuff, skateboards, all that. It doesn't excite me to be honest, but if that's something that's solvable by, um, yeah, I, I don't, I don't really know. I don't. I'm, I'm fine with cement and asphalt, to be honest. Do we have like people who are trying to actively get other materials?
I've had, so I've been approached by folks wanting to reduce their impervious cover by, um, reducing the impervious cover on the driveways.
Can we look at something that, then maybe my suggestion would be you look at things that, uh, provide stable pervious driveways. And I, I would not include crushed granite, pea gravel, any other type of gravel like material in that. Um, there are, uh, I don't know the right term for them, but sort of prefabricated driveway, you know, pervious driveway materials that are out there. And we might allow that type of thing. But not to be backfilled with pea gravel. I mean, the problem is they got to backfill it with something that ain't going to get out in the street. So, um, yeah, I'm open to, if people are looking for, i- i- if the, if the goal is how do we create brown driveways? That I can understand as a problem that, that would help us a solution given our problems with drainage. So I'm open to it. I think perhaps Kerry, maybe we just ask you to go in and come up with some approvable pervious driveway materials that, that you think are approvable. And go from there.
I was just going to say, I, I can kind of wrap my head around the idea that if somebody, you know, needs a guest parking space, that's, you know, well interior of the, on, on the lot. You know, or, or maybe even, you know, as I was addressing, you know, kind of Alex's comment earlier, if somebody wanted to create a, um, kind of a T to back out into, um, again, that was well off the, off the street. You know, I could maybe get my head around that. Uh, but I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm kind of with, with Jordan. I'm having a hard time wanting to open Pandora's box on the city getting into having to deal with pea gravel. Amy, Mike, others, Brian?
I guess, um, I don't know that the motivation on this should be driven by somebody saying, well, we'd like to reduce our impervious cover because we've maxed it out otherwise. You know, it's like, well, you know, then take it out of other areas is kind of my thinking. Um, you know, there's a, there's a, there's an impervious covered limit on the lot. And I don't know that well, I think, isn't there an impervious cover limit on the, from a TCEQ standpoint?
Nope. It's just detainage. Well, and Kerry, correct me if I'm wrong. It's just, you gotta build a bigger detainage system or put detainage stuff in.
That's right. I think now that I'm thinking about it, it's, it's just commercial and parkland. Cause I, I think maybe not in residential, but I think it's true for other, other zoned districts have impervious cover limits, but not residential. Is that right?
Okay, correct.
So then this is people with residential lots that want to just reduce the impervious cover footprint by putting in granite, crush, decomposed granite or whatever.
Decomposed granite or, I, I've had people come to me with all sorts of ideas.
Yeah. This did get me thinking, going back to the driveway comment, Jamil, uh, with, you know, your concern about there being a bunch of stuff in front of, you know, it's not just linear feet on a driveway. But like, if you have a small curb cut, but a really huge driveway, you could park 30 cars out in front of your house too. Um, you know, like a really big T, so to speak. I, I guess I don't know enough about this issue as being an issue that it drives me to feel like we need some kind of change on this front. I do know there's people with grant, crush, decomposed crushed granite, quote unquote, parking pads as Kerry's described them. And I don't know that any of those were run through any kind of permitting process. I think some of them were just added on at some point. Um, just because people are like, well, I'm just going to landscape this part of my yard with a decomposed granite and park a car here. landscape this part of my yard with a decomposed granite and park a car here. But I also don't know if that's a major problem or not. It's not something I've really sourced the community feedback on. So sorry that that makes me sound a little bit unprepared on the subject. Um, but I guess I wasn't totally appreciating what, what the scope of this was addressing. So I, I know about it a little bit more now. I'd like to kind of I mean, if y'all want to move forward with action, that's fine. I, I would probably be inclined to put a little bit more into it by like, I'd probably go around and take a look around and see what other people are doing. And then also try and get some community feedback to get sort of a better better informed opinion on this subject. But that's just me personally.
Amy, Mike? Any comments? Okay.
I don't, I don't really have anything to add.
Mike, you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Hold on. I'm in here. Oh yeah, I don't have a lot to add either. I know there are some houses in the neighborhood that have strips of or an asphalt, but concrete. And then they have like a, some kind of a aggregate in between. And I don't think it's usually crushed granite, but I know some of that stuff's already in use. I don't know if that was permitted like that or, or, or not, but I don't have a big issue with something that's larger that's not going to float down, but I know where I live, I get an awful lot of, you know, um, small sediment and, and mud and so forth that washes in front of my house and down, down my driveway and down the street. So I'm pretty sensitive to, you know, things like the decomposed granite and stuff like that causing a mess.
So um, Mike, are you, are you saying that you are not in favor of um allowing things like DCG or uh, how, how do I, how do I interpret what you just said?
Yeah, I would say that um, my feeling is that something that can easily be carried by we get flash floods and a lot of heavy rains in, in Austin and Texas. So I think some of those are probably poor choices for many lots. If, if they're going to be carried off the lot, whereas larger aggregate, I would be you know, more favorable to some larger, you know, gravel, um stones, rocks, that kind of thing.
Carrie, do you know what um what the city of Austin allows?
I reached out to them and I have not heard back. I reached out to them about um materials and curb cuts and that I don't know yet, but I will find out.
So I, I guess in an attempt to move this along, um uh Carrie, I think, I think hopefully you're clear on, on bringing this back in terms of the, the curb cut piece. Yeah, on the materiality. Uh, do you want to come back to us with uh two things? One being uh what the city of Austin does just as a point of reference? And then two being um some materials that uh, that you might find acceptable?
Sure.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on item five? Hearing none. Item six, updated discussion.
Say, uh, answering your question, Austin is asphalt, brick or concrete, anything that was uh previously pervious is allowed. And then after that it goes away. Like you can't expand. So if you had a dirt driveway, you can keep it, you can't expand it. Otherwise asphalt, brick or concrete.
Got it.
Much like Michael pointed out, I've definitely seen two strips of concrete, you know, where the tires would go and the rest of it's just landscaping. So who knows? All right. Sorry. Yeah.
All right. Item number six, updated discussion on the residential landscaping ordinance. Carrie, you got some background there?
Sure. So um this was, uh, this is sent to y'all from council. This was a, a direct send. I think it um council member Hudson sent it this way. Uh, I, I put in the packet all the sections of the code that relate to landscaping. Um, there's kind of three main sections for residential vision clearance, retaining walls and fences. That's what we've got in our code that regulates landscaping. Council has requested for y'all to consider whether or not we should have a residential landscaping order, uh ordinance. And if we do to consider the, the items that I listed in that, in the one sheet, um retaining walls. Does there need to be a, a definition of retaining walls? That risk, you know, determines a retention. Currently retaining walls are only regulated on corner lots. So do we need to look at that for lots that are not on a corner? And then I put in some other landscaping items to consider such as um we don't have a fence height regulation. Do we care about if there's a fence height regulation or not? For fences over a certain height requires um engineered plans, which is uh necessary and required by the international building code for anything masonry related, but for a wooden privacy fence, it's almost impossible to get an engineer. It, it, it's prohibitive to have an engineer draw up engineered plans for a seven foot wooden privacy fence. So those are just some items that could fall into that. If you all want to consider a residential landscaping order, I think um council member Hudson's on here. This is kind of her at her direction. So if she wants to spearhead any of this.
Welcome, council member Hudson. Um, would you uh, would you have any that you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just um would like to have some discussion and some input from, from you all on a number of things. Questions that I've asked Carrie if I've been walking around the neighborhood and seeing, so how come they can do that? She goes, well, we don't have any restrictions, right? There's a loophole, if you want to call it that, in our front yard fence ordinance. Because we have limits on, you know, height and visibility through a front yard fence. Um, and we've had instances where people have put up walls that clearly don't meet the requirements of a front yard fence. And they go, oh, it's not a wall, it's a retaining wall. Or it's not a fence, it's a retaining wall. But you know, it retains three inches of dirt on one side and nothing on the other side. And then it's, you know, four feet taller than than anything that's retaining. So some things like that, the right now, we don't have any limitation on how high above the um the surface of the ground of retaining walk can extend. And so we, we've had retaining walls much closer to the street than a front yard fences require, is, is allowed to be. Um, and then clearly not you know, no, no eighty percent. I don't remember what the term is.
Visibility.
Yeah, eighty percent visibility through it. Right. So it doesn't need that standard. And another thing which is in the DCM, but not maybe in any other of the ordinances is changes to topography at the property line. Um, right now the DCM actually does not allow that. But it's happening all over the place. And where people are putting retaining walls and leveling their lots all the way to the property line. And then putting a fence on top of that which may be great for that property owner, but people on the other side have had their lots, you know, the feel of their law drastically changed. By having that built next to them. So some consideration of any limitations we want to put there on. Again, it's in the DCM already that you are not allowed to change. And I guess without the city engineers approval, you cannot supposed to change the topography at the property line, which is done as a landscaping um issue. I think those are the main things and, and we've had a lot of instances of silt and debris running into streets from landscaping projects. And when I've asked Carrie about that, she goes, well, contractors, when there's a building permit, we talk about that. And there, you know, we explain the requirement for the silt fence and you know, you, you can't let stuff wash down the street. But landscaping projects, there's no requirement for a permit. So they don't ever have that discussion. And so um I, I, I kind of feel like if, if the landscaping project is big enough to require them to bring a porta potty in um, it's, it's probably big enough. They're probably doing enough that there should be some oversight from a drainage standpoint. Right? Just a landscape project on its own, when there's no permit required, there's no drainage assessment. And so that's has the potential to cause problems to surrounding neighbors as well.
Carrie, can you, can you bring in a porta potty without a building permit? I would assume you can't just slap a porta potty out there without a building permit of some sort.
Um, you can get a you can get a short term porta potty, I believe. Um I have to look and I, I'll have to go back and reread the porta potty code.
I do one for the summer and just make the kids stay outside. Is that possible?
Let me find out for you.
I'll be like, you're hanging in the
There's been one sitting at 102 Riley for I don't know, it seems like the last six or nine months. Cause as we, as we go hiking through the neighborhood, we see contractors stopping to use it all the time. So Sarah, is there specific language that you're asking uh P and Z to consider?
No, to me it's, it's kind of an extension of what we did a number of years ago on the front yard fence. Um, ordinance. We got a lot of input from the community, you know, because front yard fences were not allowed. And there were people that wanted, you know, had limited backyards and wanted to be able to let their kids run around in the front yard and were worried about them running out in the street, whatever. And so there were reasons why people wanted to change that. And we got a lot of input from the community on what was acceptable, you know, kind of a, a community consensus on um on what we want the neighborhood to look like, right? What limitations do we want to put in place? To preserve kind of the feel of the neighborhood. So that, that would be my I guess my thoughts on, on what we would do going forward is to get some and, and kind of to your point, Jimmy, all about, you know, maybe we don't want to have everybody's front yard be a parking lot. I, I, I would say that to me affects the feel of the neighborhood and the property value of the surrounding properties as well. So that would as, as opposed to, you know, everybody can do whatever they want to. Um, I think there are reasons to put community consensus limitations on you know, what we think is appropriate.
And, and so just in terms of trying to uh make something actionable here for P and Z uh is, is the request really is, if I'm understanding it, is to take this section 107, 32, 107, 33 and seek community input to, to potentially, you know, make some changes. Is that?
Or, or any additions, you know, things that are currently not covered that need to be covered.
And, and Carrie, do we have a, uh, and I'm sorry, uh, you guys have probably done this 50 times before, but do we have a process by which to do that?
Um I'm I think the oh, I'm, I don't I don't know that we have a process. I mean, I know with strike force, um, they've had some some polls go out to the citizenry. I'm not sure. Ashley, how, how have they been doing their surveys?
Um, we don't currently have a survey, survey platform. Um, Bowie are the, the company that's helping with that has been um, at least helping push out those surveys. Um, I mean, generally if we're just doing a call for input, I'm always happy to collect that information. But I'm sure we could look into some kind of survey or perhaps posting it as maybe like a public hearing at a future meeting.
Yeah.
Um, how, how much work would it be? Uh, Carrie, or perhaps maybe with uh, with council members uh guidance to, to take a few pictures of some of the examples that that may be uh, causing some concern. Um, I, I don't know if others on this call feel the same way, but um, you know, seeing, seeing
We're afraid to call anybody out. We're afraid if we put pictures up took specific pictures that some, you know, a particular ci- citizen or handful of citizens might think that they were getting called out. We couldn't
I don't think it, I don't think it should be something that Carrie, you have to do, or, or anybody on city staff should have to do, but I mean, I guess I'm kind of inclined, like I don't absent like sort of a a need, it's hard for me to imagine why we should just start making up regulations. So I'd love to, I'm, I'm willing to keep an open mind, but you know, Sarah, if there's, if there's a couple of specifics you want to kind of like bring to our attention, I, I'd be willing to consider it. But I, I feel like otherwise we're kind of shooting in the dark. Like, what's the big concern really?
I can write, I can write something up, the things that I have, have um seen that I think that we should discuss and get input on. And perhaps we can find pictures on the internet or in other neighborhoods, not rolling wood. So we're not taking pictures of our neighbors. Um, for things that we want to allow or not allow. Or at least discuss.
Sarah, I think, I think one of them that you described, if I heard it correctly is, is using a retaining wall. Uh, my words, not yours, but uh disguised as a retaining wall to um, to really create a impermeable fence structure um, inside the setbacks. Uh, is that, did I say that correctly?
Well, in the, in the front yard, right.
In the front yard. Yeah. Yeah. If, you know, Sarah, I think if, if, if it would uh if you'd be willing to, to maybe write something up and or take some pictures of some conditions that and/or take some pictures of some conditions that may not be in this neighborhood, but that would, I think, help. I, I, I think it would, I think it would help advance the conversation at, at P and Z. And then certainly to the extent, you know, Carrie, if there's a way to, you know, to get the word out to the community seeking input. If we have a way to do that, that would be, that'd be great, too. I'm, I'm struggling to kind of figure out beyond that what action we could take today. You know, beyond, beyond those items.
I, I think just noticing it as a public hearing. And maybe having a, a couple of public hearings might be a, a good way of doing it per Ashley's recommendation.
Hey, Jamil, um, I, I, I guess I have a question for Charlie, which is whether ramifications, if we tell somebody, that's not a retaining wall, that's a front yard fence, and you're not allowed to do that, like, it's a matter of interpretation, is Carrie protected in that? Is there?
Yeah, no, the, the
What's the
Any decision by the zoning administrator that anybody wants to appeal goes to the zoning board of adjustment.
So I guess
Well, unless it's for the interpretation of code, and then it goes to city council.
Well, that, well, if it's a zoning code, it goes to the zoning board of adjustment. If it's a building code and we've adopted the standard building code without amendments, then it's supposed to go to the building code, building code committee, which my guess is we don't even have set up.
What is a zoning board of adjustment? I'm not aware of that.
The, the zoning board of adjustment, the zoning board of adjustment is the statutorily created board where variances to the zoning code go. If someone wants to request a variance to the zoning code, it goes there. If somebody is challenging the decision of the zoning administrator and the application of the code, it goes to them. It's a quasi judicial board where individual, mostly individual decisions, property by property decisions are made. And appeals from that board go straight to district court.
Yeah, so I don't know that we have that, do we? We have a board of adjustment.
Yes, we do.
Okay, who's on it?
I don't know.
Cause I've never, I know we have a board of adjustment, the chair is Chris Braden, and that's from appeals from a decision by the building official. And I know we have a zoning, planning and zoning commission, which is us. And I've looked at the city sort of different commissions and boards. I'm just not familiar that we have one.
Our BOA is the zoning board of adjustment.
Okay, so that's the zoning board of adjustment is what we call the board of adjustment.
Charlie, can those two boards be the same board?
No.
I don't think we have one, then, Charlie.
Well, we, I know we have a zoning board of adjustment because, well, my understanding is it's, it, it is set up as the zoning board of adjustment that is required by statute. And that's actually how it's labeled in our code, is my understanding. It's actually in the zoning code where it's created.
I nominate, I nominate Tony.
You know, let me, I'll double check that, Brian, while, while we're sitting here, so.
I guess my next question is, I don't recall, does the front yard fencing fall under whatever our new chapter is for planning and zoning, or is this something that council can go directly on? Cause I mean, it seems to me you could probably solve this in the front yard fencing agreement with just definitions of what's a retaining wall and what's a fence. And a fence is anything that sticks up over XYZ inches above the dirt. I'm, I'm making that definition up, but it seems to me if, if this is a definitions problem and Carrie's not armed with enough code, like, is it us? Does it need to go through P and Z, or is this something council can address directly? Either in the building code, which is not under our purview, or through the front yard fence code, which I don't recall if it's under ours or not.
Front yard fence is y'all's.
And Carrie, those, the fence, the fence issues are in the zoning code, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that would, and, and I see now why Brian might be, would be confused. It is called in our code board of adjustment, but it is created in our zoning, in our zoning code. And it is also set up exactly the way the statute requires a zoning board to be, of adjustment to be set up. So, yes.
That, that makes sense to me, then. So our, our, what we call the board of adjustment is the statutorily required zoning board of adjustment. So that all makes sense. And, cause I know that they get the building official decisions as well, like, oh, this house doesn't comply. Or it does, and then you can, you know, appeal that decision. So that'll, that'll make sense now. Thanks for checking on that, Charlie.
So practically speaking, I'm trying to figure out what the, I'm trying, I'm trying to just do problem identification before we do a lot of work to explore further regulation. Strikes me that, I, I gotta be blunt here, that this could be a disagreement between staff and city council on what the definition of a fence and a retaining wall is. And I, I, if that clarity is further needed, it sounds to me pretty clear. A fence is above ground. I mean, it seems to me that there's some common sense that can be applied here without creating an entire landscaping ordinance.
The, the problem with the retaining walls is that there's no metric for how much the wall has to retain.
Okay, why is that? But that just becomes a fence, then. Now it's a front, if it's in the front yard, it's a front yard fence by definition. If it separates the house from the street, it's a fence.
If it retains four inches of dirt, or 12 inches of dirt, or three feet of dirt, at, at what point does it go from a fence to a retaining wall?
The second it gets above ground level. To me, it's common sense. Soon as a wall goes above the ground, it's a fence. But maybe I'm wrong on that. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see why retaining wall would have to go above the level of the ground any more than like an inch to retain dirt. It doesn't have to go up.
Well, keep, keep in mind, I mean, uh, these retaining walls can't just sort of completely follow the contour of, of the ground, one inch above the ground across the length of the retaining wall. And I think that's, I think that's a little bit of Sarah's concern. It sounds like she feels like people may be gaming that a little bit by, you know, you're starting at, at, you know, one end of the retaining wall and you're maybe you're four inches above natural grade. And by the time you get to the other end, you're three feet.
I'm out, I'm, I'm sitting at my desk looking at my neighbors. And they're, you know, eighteen inches above grade on a wall. And that house was built in the seventies, so it's, it's been around for a long time. Again, I'm just trying to figure out if, if it's as simple as public notice and we come up with a metric, because so Carrie has guidance. I'm all for that to give greater guidance to our city staff so they can do our, do their jobs in an easier fashion. I, I'm all for it. But I think in a limited fashion that doesn't necessarily require a, a whole landscaping ordinance. In the same way, if, if landscaping is being done and it's out in the street, is there not something in the existing code that allows us to require that land for the owner to clean up?
Yes, and, and owner would be required to clean up, they just might not know the regulations.
Okay, so I, I agree that there's some issues, but I'm wondering if we can manage those within the current code rather than creating a landscaping ordinance. My two cents from, from a high level.
Well, and Carrie, does
Got specific code you want? By all means, let's bring it and we'll, we'll, we'll kind of look it over. It's a, it's the six months of research, the, the potential for people misunderstanding in the middle of while we're also trying to do the strike force and all these other things that, that has, that creates my concern.
So I'd suggest that we kind of move off this topic. I don't think we're ready to take any kind of action, that if there's some specific issues for us to consider at the next meeting with like public notice and comment, that might be the best way to do it. My inclination is similar to what Jordan articulated, that I don't think we need a comprehensive landscaping plan. If there's some specific issues that we should consider, you know, I'm definitely willing to keep an open mind. But I think we need to kind of, we're kind of shooting in the dark right now. So I don't know that we're going to make a lot of progress today.
You want a motion to table, Jamil?
Yeah, well, I was just gonna ask Amy, Mike, anything to add? Nope.
Not really, no.
Okay.
I'll, I'll move, we table.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to table and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, five zero, I, I think. Okay. Favorite topic, number seven, discussion on scheduling and planning for future meeting dates and agenda items. Carrie, when is our next meeting scheduled?
Carrie, I think you're muted.
I'm checking on that. Um, it's usually the first Wednesday, so I believe it is July
And I guess I should ask, uh, before we talk about that meeting, are we gonna continue on Zoom? Or at some point, our meeting's gonna be in person, uh, cause that may affect people's availability.
The city council will be discussing in-person meetings and that, you know, that topic at their June meeting. Um, so we're expecting to have an answer by the July meetings.
Has the state given any guidance on what local municipalities will be able to do, Charlie? Or anybody on staff?
I know they have not removed the waivers yet of the, uh, the Open Meetings Act that generally require that you, you know, there, there are different requirements to have any kind of virtual participation. They have not removed those waivers yet. They keep renewing them, and correct me if I'm wrong, Charlie, I think it's every month or every thirty days. They keep extending it and they have not removed those waivers yet. So currently, these meetings are still allowed.
Yes, that's correct.
Well, speaking personally for myself, I'm fine with going back to in-person as long as everybody in the room is vaccinated.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the same. July 7th, you know, may be tricky for some people because of the 4th. I'm available if it's, if it's a Zoom option, I'm not available if it's in person.
The, uh, the park commission that scheduled the day before that meeting went ahead and pushed their, their meeting a week. Um, if that's anything that the Planning and Zoning Commission would like to consider in case there are vacations or, or things that run into that meeting, that's an option, um, if y'all would like to discuss that.
Well, let's check on the 7th first, uh, what, what do people's schedule look like?
I'm, I'm available the 7th. If we push it back a week, I'm not available.
Jordan, are you peeling off by July 7th, or are you still around?
No, I'll, I'll still be around. I am much like Amy available on the 7th. I think the next week would be very difficult for me to do in person. I'm actually here on the 7th, so.
Mike, Brian?
I think the 7th is better for me, too, than later.
I'm presently still free the 7th and the 14th, but not after that.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we plan on the 7th and Carrie, um, and get an email out and see if we can get a coram confirmed? And so any agenda items people want to talk about? I think I'm gonna bring back, uh, July 7th, hopefully to stick a fork in it, this accessory dwellings topic. It's been mulling around for a long time and it'll be Jordan's swan song. He can, he, he can vote, vote for it before he, he peels off.
I love an update on the, uh, uh, Strike Force. I, I have been unable to stay on top of the flurry of emails, but I have noticed there is a flurry. So, uh, if, if somebody from that commission, task force, whatever you want to call it, is willing to come and update us, that'd be helpful.
Anything else? Carrie, anything on your mind that we need to talk about?
No, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Well, hey, before we sign off, big thanks to city staff. And please pass on our thanks as a commission and as citizens for all their hard work over the weekend. I know that wasn't easy going through that fire drill for a second time in three months. And, uh, y'all really do show that local government does work, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Jo- Jordan, thank you for mentioning that. I agree. It was impressive to see my neighbor across the street's tree come down and then, and then see, uh, see staff show up in full force to help clear the street. Thank y'all.
Couldn't, couldn't agree more. We are clearly blessed to have the best city staff in the country. So thank you all, really appreciate it. You guys were the best.
Did a
All right, well, thank y'all.
Thank you, everybody.
Oh, yeah, I guess
Motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
All right, thank y'all so much.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.